Go ahead and call our December twenty-second workshop to order the invocation. I'll ask Commissioner Pickens to do the invocation and Commissioner Adams-Zack to do the pledge of allegiance. I'll stand.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we just thank you for this glorious day and all the wonders in it, Father God. We just ask you to guide the commissioners and staff with their presentation and the condiscerners. We're the decisions in this workshop for the best of our citizens in Putnam County, Father God. We just ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens, Commissioner Adams-Zack. We are going to keep our public comment on this part to the agenda items only. Is there any public comment on agenda items only? Hearing time, we're going to move down. Can, are we able, I'm going to take a point of privilege and to go right to transportation workshop real quick and move item C up, so the gate at the right-of-way Lake Howell Boulevard. Mr. Rodriguez, you want to take that one? And then we'll come back to the rest of the...
Jerry, will you close that door?
Mr. Rodriguez, go right ahead.
Okay, so for this item, at the September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty transportation workshop, there was a discussion about a gate blocking the Lake Howell Boulevard. It was agreed that Public Works would research the road and bring this item back for further discussion to discuss the department's findings. Research findings show that the gate is currently blocking public right-of-way. The Public Works Department is requesting the board review the supporting documents and provide concurrence for Public Works to remove and dispose of the gate blocking public right-of-way.
Okay. Commissioner Pickens, this is in your area, correct?
Yes, it is. And I actually went down with yesterday to Mr. Paul Calder, who's in the audience, and looked at this. And so it's a gate that's actually blocking a county right-of-way, a road that's not a maintained county road, correct?
It's not a main county road?
No, maintained.
Oh, no. It's not, as for the, the class, let's see. I don't think it's a class. I'd have to check on the class, but...
Okay, I guess my question is, you've done, you've done the research and this gentleman cannot put this gate across this road, so it needs to be removed?
Yes.
Okay, that's all the questions I got. I'll make the motion that we accept the, I guess we just would move this forward to the, to the consent agenda next, next meeting.
Well, Mr. Turner, you have the floor?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What class road is this? Sorry, what class road is this?
That's, I was just looking for that.
Not a Class One, I mean...
No, it's not a Class One. It's either a Two or a Three, but I'm not, I'd have to check.
Well, is it a, with Three? But it is county, it's not a private road, correct?
Correct.
Well, I guess the class doesn't matter, as long as you're attesting to me that it is a county road and not a private road.
Yes, sir. We had a survey go, a surveyor go out there and check to make sure.
Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Turner, Mr. Rawls, we're at Transportation Workshop, the gate at right-of-way at Lake Howell Boulevard. That's our first item that we've taken up outside of public comment, but there was none. Go ahead, Commissioner Turner, I apologize.
Is this an item that, as Commissioner Pickens said, would have to go to the consent agenda? Or can we just make that decision in this workshop? Because it's not necessarily a resolution or an ordinance change or anything like that. We ought to be able to just make that decision today. Is that what you recommend, Commissioner Pickens?
Yes, if we can do that, as long as the survey's been done, because this has been going on for six or seven months to determine whether or not this individual could put a, a gate across this road or not. And you've come to the conclusion that he cannot, so it needs to be removed.
And may I say something too along these lines? I've always said since I've been here, the county needs to protect our right-aways. And we have people that put stuff in them all the time, but there are right-aways for a reason. And I think this is illegal as it can be. And I'll support anything that needs to come from this board, but frankly, I don't think anything needs to come from this board other than to go out there and say, fella, get the, get the gate, get the fence off our right-of-way. Period, end of story.
But I think we should give him a date certain.
Yeah, well...
So it is a Class Two, if you look on page fifty-two. So it is a Class Two road, and we have already sent letters to him to remove it and with no response. So we've gone through... I'm sorry, what?
You're asking for permission for the county to remove the gate because he has failed to do what you asked him to do?
Yes, it was discussed at a meeting to bring it back to you guys, which is why we're bringing it back before we do it. But yeah, we, we will be removing it if approved.
Commissioner Turner?
So do you want approval from us to move it? Does that make you feel better about it? Because I think the thing should have been gone four months ago. Because it's like Commissioner Pickens said, this has been going on a while. And I've talked to the gentleman in the past myself, but I kind of laid off because it was in Commissioner Pickens's district and no sense of duplicating duties between the commissioners. But, you know, if the thing has been studied and gone, I say, take it down. If you, if it makes you feel better to have a motion from the board to do that, then that's fine. But in the, in the future, when somebody decides to put up a gate and it's across our right-of-way, I don't think you got to bring every one of them to the board. Just go tear them down. They can't obstruct the right-of-way.
Mr. Chairman, if it be the will of the commission, what we'll do is we'll continue to do that very thing and we'll do the research. We'll bring these back to you as necessary to kind of give you a heads-up as to where we are with a particular issue or problem. And we'll move forward with the legal remedies that are necessary, that staff has available to them.
All right.
Do you want a motion from the board today to approve this, Terry?
I don't need a motion, sir. We're going to take the legal course that we need to take to get this gate removed from this property.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, why don't we take a point, point of order and let's finish up your two things so you can get out of here and get back to work?
Thank you.
So let's go with the FDOT transportation alternate set aside project, page thirty-five.
Okay, so for this item, at the November transportation workshop, the board approved for us, for the Public Works to move forward with the two projects, Springside Trail Sports Complex Trail Expansion and the Curry Road Trail Connector. And Public Works reviewed possible changes in the scope involved with the Springside Trail Sports Complex. It was discussed at the Waterways and Trails Committee on December tenth. The committee did agree with the proposed modifications, but we would like to present them to you for your approval before we come to the next consent agenda with the resolution to apply for these projects. Also, I would like to clarify the scope of work with the Curry Road Trail Connector Project. At the November Transportation Committee, it was discussed, but I didn't want to clarify the scope of that before we added on to the resolution for signing. Also, I attached some updates that were requested at the last transportation workshop, like where we were with the design of that trail, so I wanted to go over that as well. So to begin, the task order number five was issued to Matthews Design Group in November two thousand and eighteen for the design of the Springside Park Trail Extension through the complex in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred. The task order included design services and geotechnical services. It did not include surveying services. The survey that was provided to them was not sufficient, they needed more information. So we are, Public Works is currently awaiting a proposal from a surveyor for the required services. So the design has not began on that project, so I wanted to clarify that. And after further review, we recommend shortening the scope, since the design hasn't been completed, to connect the St. John's Avenue Trail that's along the north side to the parking lot there in the, in the sports complex. So that way, the sports complex parking lot could be used as a trailhead to access the St. John's Avenue Trail. And so that's, that's what I would recommend. And then we could modify the task order with Matthews to shorten their scope of work. Instead of going all the way around the park to the connecting trail, it would just go to the southern part of the parking lot. And then if, if someone wanted to access the Springside Trail to the north, they could either walk their bike through the sports complex or they could drive around that dirt road that goes around the complex, and there's more parking on the north side. So the original scope of work involved constructing a trail that went alongside the dirt road that goes around the sports complex. So that, that's our recommendation. And I, I think, I feel like it would be more beneficial to the county to shorten this scope because this grant that we're applying for is for two thousand and twenty-seven and it's possible that we may not get it. So instead of having a designer design this long trail that's really expensive to construct, I feel like it would be a better idea to shorten that scope, have it connect the St. John's Avenue Trail to the parking lot. And then if we don't get the funding in two thousand and twenty-seven, maybe we could budget it for the county to construct or possibly even construct it sooner so that we could utilize that parking lot as a trailhead before two thousand and twenty-seven.
All right, before I turn it over to Commissioner Adams-Zack for a question, Kevin, I have a question for you. This is going to be in that parking lot area, so we're not going to have to re-stripe it. We put a sign that the trail starts here and the trail starts there. Is that what you're, is that what y'all have communicated? Because I think if we're going to, if we're going to deadhead it into the south end of the parking lot, there should be some re-striping, but to avoid any more cost, I think a sign that says that. Kevin, what's your feelings on that?
Yes, sir, that's all we would need to do, is just place some sort of a sign up there. We shouldn't have to modify the parking lot at all.
Okay, Mr. Adams-Zack?
Yeah, along the lines of signs, I guess if, is it possible to get a sign where them sidewalks go through, where the kids all have the concession stand and stuff, so that people aren't riding their bike down that sidewalk while there's activity going?
Yes, coming off of the other side of the three oh nine, we can put a sign there that, you know, diverts the traffic around.
Like you said though, I have no problem if a bicyclist gets off their bike, walks it through there and cuts across. It's not that far, but I just don't want little kids getting run over by someone on a bicycle. And I was in the meeting, I expressed this there as well to the Trails Committee. But just a little sign that says, what do you say, unseat your bike or...
Dismount.
What, dismount your bike here and then remount on the other end or something?
Take the seat off your bike.
Yeah, unless if you're going around that, that loop. There was some concern expressed about people with road bikes that they may not be able to navigate that road. Yeah, maybe, maybe that's so or not, but I don't know. It seems pretty navigable, I've been there several times.
Yes, sir, we could place a sign there also, that they have for dismounting and remounting.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls?
So the, at the Waterways and Trails meeting, basically, we, we concluded that the design that was proposed was not going to be viable and we were just wasting money. So we wanted the commission to approve us extending it from the parking lot to St. John's Avenue, only the existing St. John's Avenue Trail, that's all we're asking for, that little piece. And then we'll bring that, or whenever later happens.
I agree. Thank you, Commissioner Turner?
So if I'm getting this correctly, the total tap submission is for twenty-five eight forty and sixteen five forty-eight. Are those in-house?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
On the sheet, if I'm on the right sheet. No, that's Taylor Fury Road, excuse me. Let me get to the right one, forty-two. Thirty-five, excuse me. Mr. Chairman doing these out of order has got me all messed up this morning.
I'm sorry.
So what are, what are, how much money are you going to ask for, for this tap?
I, I have not put together the engineer's estimate or requested that as of yet, so I would need to, after we get approval from the board, then I would have to reach out to Matthews about the modification of the scope and get their opinion on a construction cost.
Matthews ain't cheap either. How much do we have to pay Matthews to get to that point?
So Matthews has already been awarded the task order for the design in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred, but they haven't started the design. So it's, it's not too late to modify that and reduce that proposal and shorten the scope of the project.
So a year, maybe two years ago, the board gave twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars for a design on, on part of this project that was out and around the, one of those trails that either went to Francis or either went to by, by the hospital or somewhere. So we, we paid for that design when the Waterways and Trails Committee came before us. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I, for this project, I haven't seen any records of a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar design. The only, the only task order I've seen related to this project is the nineteen thousand dollar task order, which was in two thousand and eighteen, so it was two years ago. But the way that it was written, it didn't, it didn't include surveying services, which is why, which is what they've, they're saying that they're waiting on.
Mike, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm really not. I would like the research to be done. We paid for some bike trail engineering. The commission voted and it paid for it and got it done. I don't know if it's this one or another one or what it is. I don't know what it is, but I, I need an answer to that question before I can go along with giving you money to move forward on this project or being in support of it, that we, it's not the one we haven't already done. And we just, and that engineering got set by the wayside. So if you could look into that and see, because we did a bike trail engineering already and I don't want to duplicate that service, so...
Yes, I will look into that.
What's your deadline?
For the tap applications, it's January fifteenth. So we would bring the resolution, I believe it's January thirteenth or fourteenth to, for, because we need a resolution to go with the application for the tap.
I thought you said the deadline was January eleventh?
Fifteenth.
Fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, we just need to do that research and then we have to design it. We have to do the design work, that's what you're saying, as part of this tap, the tap request?
The way that it's currently written was for, we were applying for the construction and construction engineering inspection services, but it is possible to apply for the design as well. So I mean, that is an option, would be to apply, to apply for the design, CEI and construction for a project. But for this one, since we already had a task order for a designer to complete the design, we weren't applying for funding for the design portion.
And that task order was the one that we did about a year or two ago, or is that a recent one?
It was two years ago, in two thousand and eighteen, it was when it was issued.
That must be the one that I'm thinking about. I thought it was about twenty thousand dollars and it was a couple of years ago when we did the design. Because supposedly that would help us sometime in the future to get this trail over there where it went. So that's the one we're talking about.
And, and they have not started that design. So that, but it was, the task order was issued, so, but it was a twenty, yeah, twenty thousand dollar task order.
Yeah, I thought I remembered that, okay. So I just wanted to make sure that's the one we're talking about. So it's not additional money you're asking for today. You're asking to, to go ahead and get the, the task done that we, that we voted on two years ago and then to apply for the tap agreement on January fifteenth. That's what, after all the presentation, that's what it boils down to that you're asking for today, correct?
Well, actually, sir, I was asking if we could modify the scope of the original task order to shorten the length of the project.
I think we can do that, especially if it came out of Waterways and Trails and it was a recommendation, right?
We're taking out the trail that was from the parking lot around, that's taken off the table for now.
Yeah, I'm good, but y'all did that in committee, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so I say, Mr. Chairman, that by consensus, we just say to go ask for the tap agreement and adjust the scope of work to the recommended scope.
And you're going to have it on the January eleventh board meeting, right?
Yes, yes, great, and, and then the...
Has it got to be a resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the Curry Road would be the other project that we would have to discuss before, you know, before we're completed with this item, so that when it's on the resolution, everyone understands what we're applying for. So we're not paving Curry Road, we're applying for a grant to construct a trail and design a trail and the CEI services along the side of Curry Road. So when I, when I was listening to the last workshop, I just wanted to clarify that because I think people may have been under the impression that we were paving Curry Road with that grant application, but it cannot be used for vehicular use, so it has to, so, but we're proposing to apply for a grant to construct a trail alongside of Curry Road.
Mr. Turner?
That may be what it morphed into, but that wasn't what they were asking me before that meeting. They were asking us to pave Curry Road to keep them having a drive from the edge of Curry Road, three hundred yards up and getting on another paved road and going around. So pave a long dirt road with hardly any people on it at all. Now, if we can talk the state into doing that where it doesn't cost any money, I'm good. But if they're asking Putnam County to use that and put that on the dirt to pave instead of the many other roads that actually need it much, much worse, I'm not good for that. So I just wanted to...
Yes, sir. So I, and so I, I wanted to clarify that we're not paving it, we're just building a trail alongside of it. So, and I wanted, before we put it on the resolution, I wanted to make that clear and make sure everyone agrees.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, let's move on to Taylor-Florey Road Drainage Easement.
Mr. Chairman, before he makes the, before he makes his presentation, if I could maybe have a minute?
Sure, you have, you have the floor, sir.
This whole item that you're asking over Taylor Fury Road is a twenty-five eight forty?
Yes, and that includes in-house costs associated with...
Sixteen thousand.
I'm sorry?
Sixteen thousand in-house costs, so you're asking for nine thousand dollars other than the in-house costs?
So it's, it's already been budgeted, so we're not, it's going to be, we're going to be utilizing transportation funds for it. But we were requested to bring it back to the board to discuss this project in April twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. And so before we move forward with the project, even though it's budgeted, we wanted to bring it back to you guys.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, just make this quicker for Mike. This is a budgeted project, but I believe the, the ability to do this in-house with the materials that they're asking to do is going to be a significant cost savings to the county as well. So it's just a matter of trying to get that, that project moved forward.
I appreciate all that, Mr. Suggs, if I may, Mr. Chairman. But you can spend twenty-five thousand, if you can talk the chairman into eight hundred and forty dollars, then we don't have to hear it at the board level.
Yes, sir, you're absolutely, you're absolutely right, but this was a board item that came back before and was requested to come back so we can make the modifications, and that's why we're here. So if it's the will of the board, we're ready to move forward with it.
I think you can talk me into it.
I'm ready to move forward, Mr. Chairman.
I am too. All right, any other questions from the commission? You got consensus, okay.
Yeah, I had, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that because it needs to be done. But I thought we're, I wanted to bring it back to the board because I thought, as you saw, Press Tompkins estimates, and there were sixty to eighty thousand dollars. You do that, remember, we weren't going to do this.
Right, right.
So I don't know that it actually got approved by the board, you know, back then to go ahead and do that. Because it's a surprise when somebody called me and said, why is somebody, why is the county putting a pipe down somebody's private property? So that's when I started checking on it. I understand that it needs to be done and we have, now have been given the right of, because this one started out to where the guy wanted us to move the pipe, right? And we told him we weren't, then we're going to buy the property and it was too much. So I thought we had just left it and, and the pipe was going to be in the middle of this property. So he's given us a right-of-way so we can do this. What happens to the original pipe that's in his, in his property now? Is that, is that his property?
That's not part of the project to remove that, but...
Sir?
It's not part of the project to remove it.
Okay, so that's his responsibility.
Yeah, so this item, another reason we needed to bring it is for the acceptance of the drainage easement. So we're, now, whenever we get those drainage easements, we're bringing them to the board for approval and acceptance instead of just recording them without any board approval or acceptance to commit county funds to maintaining it, so...
I have a question.
Okay, I have one, one, I have one more question. I, I know when planning and zoning and those type things, when something's going to happen in a particular area, people get noticed. Will anybody in this area get noticed that, why we're doing this work and when and all those things? And if it says yes or no, yes or no, I just want to be aware because I'm going to go to this person and tell him why we're, why we're doing this, because he was upset that we were, what he saw was we were using his tax dollars to put a drainage pipe in somebody's private property. So I guess he just didn't understand, but nobody would be noticed of the work, would they?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'll see if I can answer that. Mr., or Commissioner Pickens, what we can do once we, if it's the will of the board to approve this project prior to a construction date, we will certainly try to notify you as well as the commissioner of that district and any of the folks that are out there that we need to contact prior to any construction beginning. There is a reason that we're doing this and putting the easement and the piping in there is to convey the water. That's our responsibility away from that area, so we don't create any further issues. But as far as a pipe in the gentleman's yard, I believe that will be his responsibility to, to deal with.
Okay.
Okay, I have, I have a question along those lines. We got a pipe there now that's emptying into the guy's property, it's going under our road. Is that what I'm understanding? And we're going to leave that pipe and come put another pipe? Is that what I'm understanding and divert that and leave? How's he going to get that pipe out under the road? I mean, where am I missing, what am I missing here? Because I don't want...
Yeah, I'm with you, I don't want him to come back.
Yeah, I...
And somebody also asked me, is there any, I guess, since we've been dumping water into this pond, we can just put a new pipe in and continue to dump water in the pond?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Since, since this pipe has been in existence for a number of years and it's taking road water or storm water and it's conveying it into the pond, we can still do that? We don't have to get any special permits to put a new pipe in and we can still put the storm water into the pond?
Yes, so, yeah, so for, for this project, to answer the first question about it going underneath the road, I'll have to check with the engineer, but I believe that the inlet is on his side of the property of the road. So he wouldn't be, if he's going to be removing any pipe underneath the road, you know, he would have to let us know. But he can, like, plug the pipe at a certain area as well. But as, before this drainage easement, we didn't have any type of easement or legal rights to drain the water through his property.
I just don't think it's fair if we're going to take a pipe, there's a pipe sitting there and we're going to say it's your responsibility to move it. But y'all figure that out. I think you, yeah, I think that would be kind of mean-spirited, frankly, but, you know, but...
Okay, I mean, I can talk to Mr. Troxell about that as well, so if you're suggesting that we also pay to remove the pipe.
We need to get this project done.
Yeah, one more comment, I do believe that the, the landowner will be able to build a structure on it to where before he wasn't going to be able to do it.
Right.
Or build a structure that he wanted because the pipe was going down the center of the property, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions on this item? And we're going to move it forward then.
Okay, so, and I don't know if we need a motion or an action to accept the drainage easement, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we probably do need a motion to accept.
Probably got to go to the consent agenda at the next meeting.
Yeah, let's move it to the consent agenda on the next meeting.
Okay.
To accept that easement, okay?
All right, thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez, Merry Christmas, you're done. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's your good, Commissioner Pickens, with all this moving forward.
All right, Merry Christmas. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go back to the BOC workshop, Parks and Recreation Tangle Wild. Mr. Kevin Stevens, is that you? Page three of your agenda. Thanks for turning the air down a little bit.
Good morning, gentlemen. Yes, we have before us the Tangle Wild Floating Dock issue that we've brought to a workshop before after conferring with legal. As some background quickly, we received a Rails-to-Trails RTP grant of two hundred thousand dollars to finish the Tangle Wild project. We submitted as part of that project, along with the walking trail, a boat launch slash kayak launch that was ADA accessible. You have some of those pictures in your packet. The, the actual floating portion of that ADA launch creates a weak point in the, the structure itself, the twelve-by-eighteen dock, and it has broken a minimum of three times in the one year that, that it was installed. I do have some signed blueprints and drawings from AccuDoc, the engineers and all, that, that, you know, state that they felt it was appropriate use for that. And they did give us a one-year warranty from the time we installed it. And they, they abided by that, they did come out each time it broke and they did fix it. That warranty expired July of this year. So shortly after that, of course, it broke again. And so now we are in a position of where we need to repair and/or replace that dock. I have contacted the state about possible changes to that or changing the, the docking itself, but their response was a considerable reason that we received the money from the grant was because we were making an ADA accessible boat launching type area. The, the conversation continued and it basically comes down to, as long as we're staying close to the original dollar amount that the state gave us to spend on the project, then it's just kind of a wash to them. So I included some of the information in there. The, the original was, I believe, fourteen thousand one seventy-seven and then with some of the other accessories that they put in there. So we, we're in a situation now to where we're going to replace that twelve-foot-by-eighteen-foot dock section. I was waiting on hopefully getting some drawings from G and A as to what we're going to do. But basically, we're going to take the twelve-foot-by-eighteen-foot dock that's there, remove it completely and then put another twelve-foot-by-eighteen-foot dock, a solid dock, without the... and then put another twelve-foot-by-eighteen-foot dock, a solid dock, without the floating ADA launch. And we're going to place several, a minimum of three handrails around the, the dock itself and double the number of cleats to, I believe he said, six, minimum of six cleats around the dock also. And that will be used for ADA accessibility to grab onto the handrails, tying the kayaks canoes off to the, the, the launch itself, getting into and then getting out of with the ADA rails as part of that. The number that you see on the front page of the document is, I believe, eight thousand three hundred thirty-three was what Accudoc was going to charge us to replace it. That's with no warranty at all. The next number, the twelve thousand five hundred sixty-four, was what GNA was looking at to replace it. And then the third number is the six thousand eight hundred seventy-five is just what Hayward Construction is going to charge us to install that dock. That would be the very first page of what you have in your packet. I did go back through and review some of my numbers, though, and I don't know how some of these were off. What I'm coming up with now is that the, the GNA was fourteen thousand thirty, we had to take the taxes off of there. So that total would be twenty thousand nine hundred and five dollars. And the Accudoc's replacement would be with the labor also, of course, fifteen thousand two hundred and eight. The initial cost was roughly twenty thousand dollars, so that's what we're trying to stay in that same ballpark to not mess with the grant.
Mr. Rawls? All right, so, not to beat the dead horse, but Mr. Commander, what is the definition of latent defect?
I, it's defined in contract, but I don't, I mean, I'm sure you know it better than I do.
Well, wouldn't, this thing broke within the first year several times, correct?
Three times, yes, sir.
At what point would this not be a lemon that we would just, is, is Accudoc who supplied the original dock?
Yes, sir.
Why wouldn't we just ask him to fix the thing appropriately or replace it at no cost? Because there, it's obvious that what they designed and built was defective from the get-go. And it would be no different than us going and buying a new vehicle and taking it back three times.
I, I don't know that we ever asked them to replace it during the warranty period. I mean, that's something that generally happens during a warranty, if you have some type of defect that is caused by them. After going back and forth with this on a number of different issues, looking at the architect as well, there wasn't an avenue that we could pursue the architect for this for. And I think also, we even looked at kinda what the costs were versus kinda what the cost to enforce that would be.
Well, I understand that, but how do, going forward, how do we, how to prevent the public from paying for something and then a year later having to pay for it again? Because the first, the first one was, was defective in its design or whatever. I don't, I don't know where the, the defect came from, whether it's design or whether it's materials that were installed. But in my estimation, Accudoc should step up and just say, okay, here, here's a remedy. We'll take out the old dock and give you a new dock if you'll accept this remedy and cover the charges.
I, I agree with you, I just, if I recall, some of the comment from them was that the way that we had installed it or used it, there was a problem on some, on some level with that. I mean, I think they were pointing the finger back at us.
Uh, I, I don't remember that. I do have, uh, Mr. Taylor here is, is the designer that we had. And he's also provided me with some, the engineered, you know, signed sealed documents that they used from Accudoc, stating that in essence that this is an acceptable use for this particular project. So I, I do have, you know, the, the documents that he provided as well. If, if you have any other questions, I'm sure Mr. Taylor could probably-
I mean, I don't think it's necessarily a design issue, but whatever it is, we, we bought a product, we got a product, and within a year it broke three times, I'm assuming the same way?
Yes, sir.
So then it was defective, they repaired it, the repair was defective, they repaired it, the second repair was defective. You know, in my estimation, these are latent defects, but going forward, you know, you're asking us to spend twenty thousand plus minus dollars now, correct?
Yes, sir.
And, and, but we get no warranty this time, no expectation. And then you're saying there's no moving parts, so it's just gonna be a floating dock and shouldn't have any issues, correct?
Yes, sir, and the GNA one does come with a warranty, that if we, if we go with the GNA route.
Was that the labor-only one or?
Uh, no, sir.
That's manufacturing, okay.
Yes, that's the GNA manufacturing, it does come with a two-year warranty also. And I believe the warranty is on the fourth or fifth page of-
And this one, yeah, this one is, is just a straight floating dock, handrail, and we're done?
Yes, sir.
No moving parts?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So basically, you're asking us to give you the authority to spend fourteen thousand nine hundred and three dollars and eighty cents, and this problem goes away?
Uh, then plus the labor to install it, the six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
How much are you asking for today?
Twenty thousand nine hundred and five dollars.
And I have the same concerns that Commissioner Rawls has about latent defects. But I think we should have asked in the first year if we were gonna do it. I don't know that we'd be able to go back this far, but I have, I share his concerns, don't anybody faint? So basically, today you're asking for twenty thousand dollars, what is the exact amount?
Twenty thousand nine hundred and five.
Twenty-one thousand dollars to be able to go out and fix this problem and get back in compliance with the grant restrictions that were given us to start with, and we haven't been in compliant because the handicap section keeps breaking.
Yes, sir.
I don't see where we have a choice, Mr. Chairman.
So do we do it like a census?
Stevens, I got one question. Where does the money come from? Do you have it in your budget or do you-
We do not have that.
We're gonna take it out of reserves. We're gonna find the money?
Staff would ask that you give him a maximum not to exceed, because he still will have to go through the procurement realm. So it could give or take, obviously, that we hope this will be the worst-case scenario, but a max not to exceed. And then staff would bring back to the board a budget amendment advising the, the most appropriate place to take the money from.
Twenty-five grand?
I wasn't done, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I went, Mr. Uh-
Oh, you go.
No, you go right ahead.
Go right ahead and finish.
So you're asking for a not to exceed twenty-one? Okay, and if it comes in under that, and we give you that not to exceed, the only thing we'll see back from you is a budget amendment, because the administrator has the authority under twenty-five. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
If, if taken out of certain funds, but it could, it could be possible that when we get the procurement documents, we wouldn't bring you a budget amendment prior to having an actual physical number, tangible number. And then at that time, if appropriate, we would bring you a budget amendment back showing if the board action is needed to move those funds, or of course, if it's within his realm and one of the funds he has the ability to move, then he could authorize it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, that was along those lines, so it, it could be the lower amount, so it may not be, you know, the full twenty-something thousand dollars, right?
Yes, sir, it, it could be.
Sorry, I think what staff needs to know is which direction of repair you want to go. And that's what we need to be able to procure, a max not to exceed in that amount. So there's two potential repair options at this time. One, I believe, if I'm, and if I'm not speaking correctly, Kevin, help me. If we continue to, to operate with the mechanism that we have in place today, logic would predict that we're gonna continue to see failures of that mechanism. If we switch to a different designed type dock, the higher of the two amounts that you're seeing there, staff and, and all involved believe we won't see the mechanism failure.
Yeah, I don't wanna see the mechanism failure again. I don't, I don't see any failure.
No, we're talking ADA, Mr. Are you done, Mr. Pickens? Thank you, Commissioner Rawls.
Just for clarification, what mechanism is failing? Is it the hinge part on the, the ADA?
Yes, sir, it, where that, if you look at your drawings there-
No, I'm familiar with-
So where there's no real connection between the, the outer portion where the ADA floating dock portion goes, and there's about a two-foot section that's really holding the entire outer portion to the other part of the dock.
Right.
That's it, you've got a little two-foot section that's connecting it on the St. John's River with the winds and everything. It just, there's so much shearing force going through there, it just rips it each time.
So it, it sounds to me like GNA is gonna, are gonna be the lesser of the two evils? Cause they're, they're coming with a warranty?
Yes, sir, they, they are the more expensive option, but they do provide us a warranty as well.
So I, I wouldn't have a problem with GNA, and you only have one, one price, one, one vendor pricing installation for labor, correct?
Yes, sir.
I wouldn't have a problem setting it up to twenty-five thousand dollars and let them run with it.
Well, he said this is worst-case scenario, twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Yeah, thank you, I agree with that, let's just give him the twenty-one.
That a motion?
Well, I'll make it just a second. Did we already spend money on this repair? Cause we voted to spend money on this dock a while back.
No, sir, we haven't spent any money-
Haven't done it yet.
No, sir, no, sir, that, that was a-
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take the, give them a not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars to fix this, to fix this dock, using the GNA proposal, is that what you needed, Julie?
We have proper motion by Commissioner Turner. Second by Commissioner Rawls, discussion, Mr. Adams, that.
With what you described is what's causing the damage, I mean, it sounds like this warranty that we get from GNA really is of no use either. Does not cover damage by weather, including but not limited hurricanes, tornado, lightning, freeze, or other acts of God. I mean, it really is, is saying that what you described voids the warranty.
Well, there, if, if I could, so what, what, what are you saying is you have a big dock and there's a little, a little area that drops in for the, we're taking that out. It's just gonna be a floating dock, so the only moving parts are the, the U-bolts, the brackets that move it up and down, and the pilings, and you wouldn't be able to warrant that anyways, but-
So we're not, the connection is what broke?
Yeah, the connection.
This connection broke, not the whole dock.
Now we're not gonna have a connection, we're just gonna have a gaff that you step over.
No, you said it had railing around it.
Yes, we're, we're gonna have handrails, ADA accessible handrails.
Right, but the, the two docks are basically next to each other.
It's just gonna be one-
An inch and a half apart, whatever it is.
One twelve-foot by eighteen-foot floating dock.
One piece, no more moving pieces.
And that will, Mr. Chairman, if I may, and that will keep as ADA, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, we got a proper motion, a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Pose like sign the ayes have it. Commissioners, let's, would it be the will of the commission to continue on and maybe we can get this knocked out next thirty minutes and we can be done?
Sure.
If we don't get done by twelve-thirty, we'll take a lunch, how's that sound?
Order pizza.
Okay, Commissioner Pickens, Georgetown Boat Ramp? You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Harvey. You know, we've been having the discussions about, you know, moving forward with the feasibility of putting a, a boat ramp at the Georgetown property. And I wanna thank and introduce Mr. David Gerardin right up front, he's done some serious work for us. And I wanna thank Jim Toronto for getting in and helping also, and also Kevin with Parks and Recreation. So you see in the packet that you got, it has a, an aerial of what the actual property is in Georgetown. I don't, I think a lot of people have not been down there to it, so you can see what it is. And then also, David had been working and then Jim with, I believe it's a representative from St. John's River Water Management. And I think y'all did do a site visit down there. And we've been waiting on some comments or a report from her, and finally, it was relayed through Brad Purcell. And Brad has sent us some information, we had a, a, a kind of a group meeting. Brad was on the phone to discuss some of the obstacles that we would be looking at to, to move forward with a, with a boat ramp. So I'm gonna ask Jim to present some stuff, but Dave, would you like to make some comments about the work that you've done and, and your opinion on this project?
What I've done is go out and look at the property and see what the size of the wetlands that we would have to encroach on, as well as look at how deep we would have to go to get a, get the boats in and out. The project has taken a pretty bad turn because of the COVID issue. Apparently, the Water Management District permitting load has increased just dramatically since the COVID thing. And I have had a difficult time getting them to come out and join me on the project and look at it. But I did get one of the officials to come out and look at it with me. And they have concurred with what I had on the wetland line, so we are moving forward on that. However, an interesting event happened just two days ago, which I'm sure you've all read about. The Corps of Engineers is no longer going to be in the permitting issue on this. The Corps has no legislative timeframes on permitting. Therefore, they take two to three years generally on any permit, just because of their load and lack of staff and lack of money. And we're, of course, well aware of the lack of money with this county. But what we need to do now, I believe, is actually take what we have and go back to the Water Management District and do a pre-application meeting with them to discuss exactly what kinds of penalties we would be facing with mitigation or cost, yeah, just cost recovery to the Water Management District. We're gonna destroy quite a bit of wetlands and, and trying to put in a boat ramp. So that would be quite an issue to them, and it may be quite expensive. But we don't know how much it's gonna be or if we're going to trip certain thresholds. So it's a matter of permitting now, just trying to get to the Water Management District and get them to look at the designs that we have, and we don't really have a design yet. But we'd like to create one so that we can go to them and just see what they have to say about it.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Before I turn it over, do you mind?
Yes.
I was here from the beginning and when we took Nine Mile in Georgetown, and we had some grandiose plans. And I'm not saying that that was wrong, I'm just saying that we thought more grants would come and we could buy the front and the end of the car and hopefully the back end would come. Is this, in your opinion, going to be something that we just cannot satisfy what we told the state we would do on that? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, I really don't.
No, that's fine, we, we're already, we're already pretty far out of compliance with this thing, which is a shame. Kevin's been working very hard with Florida Communities Trust on trying to figure out how we can come into compliance without costing us a couple of million dollars. I don't know what the grant possibilities are now. The COVID thing has hit not only Putnam County and every other, you know, state in the union, or every state in the union, but it's also hit the federal government as well. So where the grants are, what we can do with this thing, we're not sure of yet. We have explored one other opportunity with Mr. Pickens and myself, excuse me, Commissioner Pickens and myself. We have an individual who would like to approach, individual over in St. Augustine, to come in and purchase the piece of property right beside this one to give us a little bit more leeway in the permitting issue. We haven't gone any farther with that, but that's also a possibility. As for whether or not this thing is a boondoggle or not, I, I, I wish that this commission in the future, when they're talking about purchases of land, would go and ask people at the Water Management District to assess the land for what we wanted to do with it. This wetland project, wetlands are gonna be pretty tough nut to crack.
And let me clean, I don't think, I think the intention was well, and I think that-
I agree.
The place is excellent, if it could happen there, but I don't know how much we can continue doing that. So, Mr. Pickens, thank you. Commissioner Rawls, you have the floor?
Well, I read Brad's letter, and he, he talks about point-six-two acres of functional loss. Is that what you're, what you're talking about? So the, is there any way to quantify what, because he's got it broken down into point-one-four for the water and point-four-eight for the land. What does that cost for mitigation for a half acre of the mitigation bank?
The mitigation banks could cost anywhere between one hundred thousand and a million dollars per acre. Or less.
Or less, yeah.
I had to go through, excuse me.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
I had to go through it once, and it, I found I was able to mitigate something way less than those numbers.
And the, the point-one-four of water loss, who, who quantifies that in dollars? Who's, who's authority is that?
Water Management District will do that.
So is there any way to have a meeting with them?
Absolutely.
Before design? Because, you know, you're gonna, obviously, there's a concept of some sort, we've seen it. Are they willing to sit down and have a conversation and toss out some numbers maybe, or?
I'm not sure whose responsibility it is to go to a mitigation bank. It's probably going to be the counties. They would have to research the mitigation banks in the local area, and it has to be in this, in this basin, local basin, to find out what type of costs we can run up on.
Hey, we're, we're, real question. The, the, the property that we got from, um, Beck's loan and-
Mm-hmm.
That has, there's, um, property left on that that's not been mitigated. Is there any chance of using that for that?
Well, there's a chance of any, we got property at Dennis Creek, we could-
We do?
There is a possibility to, to, yes, use our own property as mitigation.
We could, we could have discussions.
So, how do we have, how do we have a conversation without spending a lot of money upfront on engineers and surveyors, is that possible?
Well, what it would require me to do is to go out to the property, Georgetown property, and actually measure the distances of how far up in the up, uplands and how far out, well, I know how far out to go to dig the, uh, channel to get out of the boat ramp. But the, I haven't actually done the measurements. Trying to do measurements in a swamp is sometimes a little bit, uh, challenging, particularly when I'm trying to do it by myself. But, um, it's, you know, it certainly can be done and should be done well before we go talk to the Water Management District.
Is this something our staff can do in-house, the surveyor?
Yeah, I think we can, I think Commissioner Pickens and Jim Toronto, you, there's plenty of power there to sit down.
Jim shaking his head.
I, I think the Water Management District would be very willing to work with us. I just don't, I mean, I've always been, I mean, I've had good relations with them since I worked for them for twenty-eight years. But I, I think that they would be very willing to try to help the county through this issue.
Yeah.
It's a timing thing, it's just they're, they're up as an alligators also, guys.
Commissioner Turner.
From economic development standpoint, if I could, um, this would be a, a huge shot in the arm for Georgetown area.
That would be perfect, yeah.
I can tell you, I, I've been talking to a couple of groups that are looking at South Putnam from Willaka to Georgetown for development. It's a, it wouldn't hurt to have a boat ramp down there, south, you know, south of Willaka, if we can.
Commissioner Turner.
Okay, first off, was the boat ramp part of the agreement?
Yes.
To, to get the land to start with? Because I think we started this way up.
Mr. Taylor started, yeah.
Well, yeah, we started, we, we started up back up again about last year, a year before.
Was that a requirement? That was a requirement?
Part of the plan.
Yeah, I, I was gonna have Kevin speak after, after Jim's presentation, uh, where we are as far as a, a little bit on the plan, and basically what the, so the requirements are, and then where we are in compliance, cause we're still not in compliance, so.
It was under, I thought it was, my understanding that any impact under one acre, you didn't have to mitigate it. When did that change? Because the last time I did it, it had to be a, under an acre before you had to mitigate it.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Jim Toronto from Planning and Development Services.
Already did.
What we have been told is that, um, we have not only, um, wetlands, we have pristine wetlands. And because we are going to be impacting those wetlands, we are going to have to offset that either by mitigation, by buying credits to the mitigation bank, or by using property that we already have to offset that cost. Or, as Commissioner, I'm sorry, maybe David mentioned, uh, a benefactor would come forward with a, a piece of property. Let's just say the property next to this one is purchased, we would then put a conservation easement on that to, uh, help us with the mitigation issue that we have. And not only are we looking at the wetlands, we also have the submerged aquatic vegetation that we're gonna have to look at as we dredge out into the Saint John's River. And that's gonna be, you know, through the Corps, not only through the Water Management District, but it's the US Army Corps of Engineers from a permitting standpoint.
Yes, changed.
From, from dredging, that's changed?
It's changed, the DEP has of this week, I think, DEP.
Okay, well, that, that would be, still, there's a permitting process to go through for that.
Okay, I guess I'm gonna have, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'm gonna have to go back to the, uh, to the comments that were made earlier. You know, when, is this to the point to where it's not a viable project that we need to start looking at somewhere else down South Putnam to put a boat ramp? This commissioner is interested in getting a boat ramp somewhere in the south end, cause we don't have any now. I mean, there's a few commercial ones, but even some of those are hard to access and what have you. Putnam County needs a boat ramp down in the south end somewhere. I know it's not my district, but it's a, like Commissioner Rawls said, it's an economic development issue for the south end of Putnam. So, I, uh, when do we turn this off? I mean, I know we probably already would have it without your generosity of going down there and doing, you know, basically telling us. So, are we to that point yet, or do you want us to continue on a little further?
Let me look in my back pocket and give you an answer to that one. I, I really don't have an answer at this point.
Can the microphone, Mr. Yar?
We can go back to, um, the Water Management District, and I think probably that is the next move, is maybe let me just go talk to the Water Management District. Maybe Kevin can come with me, or Jim, and let's, let's find out. Let's get some, let's get a professional opinion from that, because they've got the, they've got the knowledge.
If I'm understanding correctly, it's a viable project, it could be done. It's just a matter, can we get through the red tape?
And money.
And the cost.
And the cost.
What?
And money.
And the cost.
Cost, you know, and that's what we need to determine before you decide.
I don't think it's gonna cost that much to mitigate, especially if we can use a conservation easement for mitigation and they might let us use it. And especially if we can, um, if we can, uh, you can buy mitigation credits that are smaller, but we have other pieces of property around that we're not planning on using, we could put a conservation easement on them, and that would also help us with our mitigation. So, there's multiple ways to get there that I've used in the past or dealt with in the past. So, um, like I said, I thought if you was under an acre, that you didn't have to deal with it at all. Um, but that may be under a different classification of wetland or whatever. So, um, I would, uh, I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, if it's all right with the, the commission, that we give, uh, Kevin and Mr. Troyana, if he will participate, and, um, and, uh, Mr. Gerardin?
Gerardin.
Jordan.
Gerardin?
Yeah, just David, don't worry about that.
Okay, David, well, I, I wanna give you the, the respect you deserve, sir.
Too old to need respect.
I'd like for him to-
Like for him to what?
To be in that meeting.
That's fine, if he wants to be there, I don't problem with that.
Yeah, I wanna be in there, and I would, would like to ask, Jimmy, can you go over some of the stuff real quick of what Brad had sent, um, there as far as the impacts of, of each stage that we do, and then I'll have Kevin close with where we are with the, with the compliance?
Okay, Mr. Chair, if I may to add, if I may add to this discussion, through our comments and our communications we had with Mr. Purcell, I, I believe, David, please correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we were at the point now that the district has done what they can, since they are gonna be a reviewing body. We can certainly take in front of them conceptual drawings, plans, we can look at concept, but since they are going to be the permitting body, uh, their assistance to us is, is basically over. Now, they will certainly review through the permitting process and help us through that, but we have to bring them, I believe, that was the, the concept that we heard from Mr. Purcell, was to bring them with their ten, twenty, thirty, a hundred percent plan for them to begin reviewing. Because they are the permitting body, they couldn't provide any free technical assistance other than through the permit process for us.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, Jim. I, um, I, I know that quite a number of clients would come to the district, Water Management District, and ask for a pre-application meeting.
Correct.
And so-
I think we needed our plan, though, for that pre-app meeting.
Well, we certainly need more than we've got.
Right.
Let's ask-
And a lot of it has to do with probably some type of survey work to give us an exact idea what our footprint's going to be, damage footprint.
Okay, Mr. Turner.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think we just need to give the, get the committee that we've just appointed, Commissioner Pickens and, uh, Mr. Troyana, uh, David and, um, and, uh, Parks and Rec Director, Kevin. Sorry, Kevin. Um, when you get old, you can't remember why you walked across the room, so don't, don't let it bother you. Um, so anyhow, I, I, I just think we need to let them go and take it from here and go back to Water Management and see if it's doable, approximately how much cost is gonna be on it, because I think we've discussed multiple times that we, the main reason that we took the money and from the, and the front, that used to be spent from the fishing fund and use that money to do maintenance at all the boat ramps. Instead of we use the reserves to do maintenance of the boat ramps to keep from utilizing the fishing fund money for the main reason that we wanted to use the fishing fund money for capital reasons and get something out of it, other than just spending it to pick up trash. So, we did that this year, uh, this past year. So, you know, if this isn't gonna be viable, then I'm still for keeping that money intact in the fishing fund as much as possible and using it for a capital project. But if this one isn't gonna be viable anymore, we need to kill this rascal and go find one that is, and just keep, you know, stop holding it for years and years and years. So, if we could just get it to the point to find out if it's a viable project, I mean, if, we got three hundred grand, okay, so we got to put some in there, okay.
Two hundred.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Adams, eh?
I guess, and maybe you're gonna cover this in a minute, but is there any way to, to keep the project of the park going? Cause my understanding is this is part of what was, to get the property, it's part of what we were required to do. Is there a requirement in the size of the dock we need, or the type of dock, or just that we have a dock? Uh, and cause maybe we, if we do it, end up abandoning this, maybe we can do something, a boat ramp, I'm sorry. A boat ramp, maybe we do a smaller scale thing there and do, find another property, or is that just not possible?
Uh, the way it works is that we, we received the land from Flor- uh, the Florida Communities Trust and Land and Water Conservation Fund. In order to do that, uh, we had to provide them with a management plan saying, this is what we would do if you give us this property. Uh, we came up with those ideas of this is what we would do. We would put in a playground, we would put in a pavilion, we would make a paved road that goes down, we would put in a two-lane boat ramp, we would make little kiosks for natural settings. We would put, so that's the management plan that we submitted to them.
So, we specified a two-lane boat.
That, that, that's what we would do. And so now that is what the state is holding us to. You told us you were going to do this, and now you need to do it. So, that, that kind of puts us in the, in, into the position of we, uh, I, I do have a couple of emails that I can share with you later, but we can't apply for any state grants or, or any grants until we come into compliance with the management plan. So, we can't go to, to get a grant to build a boat ramp when we already told the state that we were going to build a boat ramp. So, that's kind of how that came about. Uh, we did put in the playground, we did put in a pavilion. We were led to believe that that would have brought us in compliance, but it did not. Uh, we are still being held, uh, liable for all those other aspects that we said we would do.
Or we could just give it back like we did Nine Mile.
Mr. Rawls?
So, um, two things, I guess, would it hurt for us going forward to start looking for an alternative site? So, we're not spinning our wheels and wasting time. And then, at the same time, like Commissioner Turner said, be prepared, um, to give this back if need be. Um, unless there is a way for us to negotiate to keep the land as a park, not, you know, and, and, and tell them what the impacts are. Um, you know, are they aware of the environmental impacts that are, have been brought up?
I, I'm not sure if they're aware of those. I, I have been in contact with the, the Florida Communities Trust and Land and Water Conservation Fund and to see what we can do to change or modify the management plan.
Right.
Uh, that was done ten years ago, under, of course, previous administrations, previous, uh, financial times. Uh, things have certainly changed in those last ten years. So, I'm in contact with them now to try and find out what the process is that we need to do, uh, to see about altering that management plan. Or if nothing else, see if we can change the management plan and, uh, proceed in phases of, you know, a phase one to conduct this and a phase two can, you know, to do this, so that we can still keep it, maintain it, and just give us another, uh, you know, extended period of time to be able to fulfill that obligation.
Uh, um, otherwise, property values are going up, and then wouldn't, wouldn't hurt for us to try to start identifying the potential properties.
Mr. Adams, eh?
So, if we found, how are we limited if we found an alternate location, though? It sounds like we still couldn't, just have to build it out of our own pocket.
We're gonna build this out of our pocket anyway.
Just brand new, new location, and we, if we fail to meet this management plan, what's our liability there? Give back? Well, I guess, Rich.
E- e- eventually, we would have to negotiate about returning the property.
And I think that's something we need to look into and open some communication about, see what that, what that looks like for us.
And Mr. Chairman, I have a note written here to reach out to the Florida Communities Trust and just see what our options would be. Uh, cause this is getting to be a project that is, is morphing into something much more. So, let us just work on that and see where we can, what information we can bring back to the board.
Because we, we, we have built assets there, so I mean, if we gave it back, then-
Right.
What do we do with those assets as the state? Now, the state's not gonna be like, hey, we have a park now, I mean, what's?
Those are all conversations that we can have once we get a, uh, uh, communique back from, uh, from Florida Communities Trust, of what our options would be for them, and then we'll come back to the board and present.
So, at this time, are we doing anything more than just maintaining the property? Do we have any other projects in flight in hopes that this happens?
This, this project here is a project that was moving forward. We, we've done the other projects, the, the, the playground and the pavilion and things of that nature, working towards the compliance issue that we have with this property. This is the next issue that we have, uh, on this property. This is the project that we're trying to now bring to some type of, uh, hopefully resolution one way or the other. And, uh, then we'll have that conversation again with FCT to see where we're at and what options may be available to the county for, uh, for this property.
Do we have any other properties that are in a similar status to this?
Yes.
What are those?
We'll get with, I can get with you after this, I'll have to look them up.
Is it just one or, I mean, I, I guess I'm-
I can tell you that, one, one of those is Nine Mile Swamp.
Just Nine Mile.
Okay, so just-
Okay, so we'll, we'll, yeah, that's, that's a Nine Mile Swamp issue that we've been dealing with for a while.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Turner.
I think, hang a while, it's pretty close.
Yeah, pretty far.
Hang lots closed, we're good with it.
I would be shocked if we get any kind of a deviation of the management plan, cause we worked hard on Nine Mile to get a deviation to the management plan that would allow us to cut the timber in a prudent manner, take the income from the timber and manage the property, and that blew their ass up. So, we didn't have any choice, that's a Samatia term, Rich.
That language is not going to be used.
That donkey went flying.
Um, so anyhow, I, uh, maybe we will, and maybe we can find out, certainly wouldn't hope, I don't mean this badly, but I think that that conversation needs to come a little higher up the ladder than, than, uh, than Kevin. I think we need to talk to those people and find out if there's any leeway, tell them we'd like to build a boat ramp, it may not be possible. If Water Management's gonna make us spend a half a million dollars between Water Management and now DEP, not the Corps anymore. If it's gonna cost a million dollars to build a boat ramp, then yes, that might be our, and they're gonna be all nasty about it, then it may be our only option is to give it back too. I mean, that may be it. So, uh, but they sure didn't care. I mean, when we went to them and asked them for some deviation in the management plans at Nine Mile, they ain't care a lick that it was gonna cost money or not cost money, or we couldn't get in compliance, or we wanted to use the money from the timber sales, you know, to help manage the property and get into compliance or whatever, they ain't care, they didn't care.
Well, let me kind of wrap this up. I think you got your marching orders to get with the committee and go to Water Management, get back. I think in that timeframe, administration will contact with you, um, see if we can alter that management plan, and then bring it back. And then we need to decide if we're gonna put lipstick on this pig or if we're just gonna let the pig go wild, one or the other's gonna happen.
Could I, could I get Jim Toronto just to go briefly, quickly over-
Very briefly.
What, what Brad had done, just to briefly, and then we'll, then we'll move this thing on. But we were just really looking for direction. We're, we're to the point where is this thing viable or not, and then how do we move forward, uh, with this? Do we hire somebody to try to get us a plan, do we just go to Water Management? Um, you know, can we deviate from the, from the plan that was sent, you know, the management plan? Uh, so those are some of the things we want to discuss, but Jim, uh-
I think there need to be done in order, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I think there need to be done in order. Now, obviously, the next step is to find out what leeway we have with the management plan. And once that's done, if there is some leeway or what have you, or that it, then the next step would be to try to come up with how viable a project is it to put it down there. Because if it's gonna cost a million bucks, I don't believe this committee's, this commission's gonna spend a million bucks to put a boat ramp down there. Um, I don't think they'd spend a million bucks to put one in East Palaca where it's in the central of the county, much less that far south. I don't mean that badly, Commissioner, but in, it's the excess of, the access of it would be better up here than it would down there. So, you know, I, I have no problem with Mr. Troyana, uh, doing whatever he needs to do, but personally, I think that just needs to go through the first couple of steps before we-
You're okay with that, Jim?
Yeah, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
You done?
Thank you, David, Kevin, and Jim.
Julianne, we have one item from you, and then Human Resources, give me a timeframe on how long that will take you. Tell me your timeframe.
I, I could be three minutes, but again, it's gonna depend on...
Angela, how long for those two items?
I, what two are an update and what's the cost?
All right, I think we should just move on.
Yeah, we're close. I agree.
Okay, Julianne?
I'll take this one straight on, this is the same program we've been doing for years. All we're looking for is approval to move them forward and sell them, isn't it?
Yeah. So, you have three items all in one here. We have nine that have been escheded that we want you to give me approval to go ahead and declare surplus instead of...
Let's take them one at a time.
Okay, number one.
I do the nine, the nine properties that, that we need to put out for bid.
Yep, I need consensus to make them surplus and a minimum bid number.
Yes. You know, what did we do last time, twenty bucks?
Yeah, let's do minimum.
But whatever we did last time was fine.
Yeah, so item one, we have consensus from all the commissioners, put it out?
Yeah.
For bid, Mr. Adams.
So, although I, I do like this program, I think we can improve on it. So, I would like to see it be something that we talk about in the future. For today, I'm not gonna say no, but I think there's ways we can put these properties out for sale that create more participation, um, and create a, a better return for the county. As, I ran an auction business for seven years. A public auction to me is the way to go on this. And whether we contract with a private firm or not, something like that, may be an option. I, again, for these seven, I'm not gonna say no, but I would like us to, at some point, put this in a workshop where we can talk about the process.
Sounds to me like a good...
Good idea.
...Tuesday in January, talk.
I agree.
Um, I, I've seen this done by auctioneers, where the, the return was basically all the advertising is on them, all that's on them. And they basically get hundreds, people show up that manage that is with a closed bid, because I've done closed bid auctions before as well. Once that person loses that bid, that frees up the money if they're in a live auction to bid on the next property, the next property. And, uh, there's, there is some excitement to an auction that creates increased bids, I guess, is the way to put it.
We're good, we're sitting on the wall, we're good.
Yeah, we're good.
I'd like to see us go down that path.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk more about that in January. Uh, the, number two, Julianne.
Yes, sir, we've had five citizens reach out to us related to properties owned by Putnam County that they would like to purchase. Staff is asking the VOC to review the five. Of the five, staff at Public Works is asking the VOCC to allow them to retain one of the five. The rest of the five would be, um, assessed by staff to determine the appropriate sale venue, i.e., there's at least one on here that is a non-buildable lot and of no use to anyone other than the adjacent property owner. And obviously, Florida statutes allows for us to make a deal with that adjacent property.
I'm good with that.
So, I have one property that the Public Works staff i- is asking to retain, asking the board not to sell, and the rest, uh, staff is agreeable.
Yeah, as long as we put on that one property, so the future boards don't have to deal with it?
That's why I started this database.
Something like that.
Yep, not a problem.
Okay. Everybody else good with that?
Yep.
All right, you got consensus. The other one...
Again, I'm sorry, I cannot use that same minimum bid number if any of these go to bid. Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, you wanting to sell them, which is fine, but you're gonna put them in a silent auction on ones that they've been requested?
No, sir, I'm gonna, um, review each of them to determine which criteria they meet. And if they meet the criteria for being, um, an unusable lot, less, valued less than what the statute sets out, and only usable to the adjacent property owner, then we could do the private sale in that manner. Otherwise, they would go into the same bid as the other nine escheded properties.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Number three.
Yes, sir.
I can tell you right now, I'm not interested in taking on any property.
Give me consensus to that, I'm good with it.
I mean, unless it's viable, unless you say it's, it's gotta be done. I mean, we've got enough things people want to donate to us.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and Public Works staff and Parks and Recreation staff both reviewed the four offers that are being donated, and neither department has any desire in any of the four properties.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure on that?
I said, unless we have a useful note.
I know that should be our standing policy right now.
Okay, fine.
I'm done.
We're done with that. Angela, you're next, you got Human Resources, page twenty-eight and thirty-two. I should've called you by your last, that's a...
It's okay, good afternoon. So, um, in continuing to update the handbook for employees, these are the next ones that were on the list. So, the first two are just current policies that we have, it's just updating the language. So, it's the ADA complaint procedure and the discrimination complaint procedure. Uh, the language that was in there was just outdated, um, and it was too granular for what a complaint needs to be when it comes forward. So, all this did was kind of encompass that and make it easier for someone to come forward if they have a concern.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions on this item?
What pages are we going through, I'm sorry?
Twenty-eight. Yeah, twenty-eight, thirty-two.
Actually, thirty, but...
Thirty-two, there is some, I think it's something left out. It just says national origin, or any other protected class, and it skips the Human Resources so an investigation can begin. There's something crossed off there where I probably should say what the next step is, like your previous one. I just think we crossed off too many words, maybe. On page thirty-two, the first...
First paragraph.
First paragraph. Because otherwise, this paragraph makes no sense.
Any protective classes, encouraged to in contact.
So, it should end with protective class, is that what you're saying? But you're saying that's...
No, no, and then it says Human Resources, and it just doesn't say to refer it to Human Resources, so that part got...
Oh, I got it, I see what you're saying.
Is encouraged to contact Human Resources.
That's not in the version we have, on page thirty-two. That's what I'm saying, it's just missing that, encouraged to contact.
I can make that change.
So, it's gonna say is encouraged to contact Human Resources so an investigation can begin?
Correct.
That's gonna be the, the new wording on it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Would that, would that be in writing, or just...
It'll be in writing.
They can contact in writing, or they can, for ADA, they can contact verbally as well. And then we can ask them to put it in writing for us.
Good catch, Mr. Adams, good catch on that. All right, I'm good with that, with the changes that we just talked about.
Okay.
Is that how that's gonna be worded?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, go on to the next one, then.
And then the final one is a new policy to put forward, so it's an out-of-class policy, um, in case that we have, um, people who are unable to come to work, that if someone is stepping into their shoes, um, can take on some additional responsibilities and be compensated, um, for that.
I thought we already did that, or was that just kind of a, I mean, it was around when I got here, but...
We don't have an official policy for it.
Official policy, yeah, so, okay. So, basically, the salary will increase ten percent, but not up to the person's salary at that point.
Correct, it can increase up to ten percent, and then during that process, we will continue to review that person. So, if in which case the person does not come back, um, we, you know, would be able to...
So, there's a little incentive to do the job, but, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Turner.
So, then if it didn't work out, and you put that person back at their previous level, that money would come back, correct? They don't get to keep the money.
Correct.
That, Mr. Chairman...
It's just while they're performing those duties.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I ask for this policy, I'm sorry, my apologies.
Mr. Adams, that had his line on first.
You could answer that, but, um, I guess the duration, we're just saying that, so we should be, not exceed a hundred eighty days, so that means that basically comes to, Mr. Suggs, to re-up it for a hundred eighty days? Or does it, approved by county administrator, go beyond a hundred eighty days?
No, my microphone's off, sorry. So, what's the process if it goes beyond a hundred eighty days? Because are we similar, are we in that kind of situation with the Parks Department right now?
Yeah.
Where we're way beyond a hundred eighty days, and he's still interim?
He's not interim, sir.
Oh, so he's officially the director?
They've laid a position.
Okay, cool. Well, let's say we had a situation, whatever it is, once we get to a hundred eighty days, is it a renewal for a hundred eighty more days? If you just, you know, if you just haven't found someone, or the person isn't back from sick leave, whatever the cases that create the situation.
I believe that, I believe it states that it's up to the county administrator that would make that decision, and we would, we will certainly do it on a base by, a case-by-case basis, depending on the situation that we're in. The policy came about...
But you're not, your intent is not to leave those positions open?
Oh, no, sir, no. The, the reason why this policy came forward is I asked, uh, HR to put this together, is, uh, we, we're currently in a situation where we have one of our supervisors, department heads, that's, that's out quite a bit. And, uh, you know, so what, we, we've got someone that's been stepping up for days on end to do, take on additional duties, responsibility, with the ability for us to compensate. And so, I thought that was a, a situation we need to rectify. So, it's, this is nothing more than when we have someone that needs to fill that position for, for a, uh, whether, for several hours or several days. We have the ability to compensate them for taking up those extra duties and responsibilities.
Understood. Commissioner Ross?
So, I mean, recently, we had several people that were in this position, um, Laura Parker, before you got hired, um, uh... Walking across the room.
Fit your chair and leave.
EOC operations, um...
Brian?
Brian, there you go, Brian, Brian, Brian Simpson. So, you know, if, if, if somebody had been hired in Ryan's position, you know, he's been running the position for a long time, does he take a step back? Because in my estimation, that, that would be a pretty big slap in the face, um, especially if they've been running the position for several years. So, how, you know, should that be addressed, or, you know?
So, when we're asking someone to do interim work, it should have an end date, which is why we have in the hundred and eighty days to encompass that. Because at the end of that, we should be reviewing, is this the right person for us? Are we gonna go to market and try to find somebody else? Um, so we're not keeping someone on the hook for, for time on end.
Now, the next question is, have you discussed this with the fire union? Because that's gonna happen on a regular basis, where a lieutenant takes off and a engineer steps up, or engineer takes off and firefighter steps out of grade.
So, it is, there is something in their, the new, um...
Contract?
Thank you.
Go on.
In the new contract, um, that addresses that, but this is just really for...
But is theirs compensated, or are they just allowed to step up for that one shift and come back down? They don't get compensated, I think that's...
I believe there was an incentive for them to step up, I can't remember off the top of my head.
It's not ten percent. I, I, I don't, I don't think it's ten percent.
No, 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 no.
So, that's, that's what I'm saying, I just...
Because it's like per shift of every time.
I think it's a great idea, don't get me wrong. Um, and I think it's been long coming, but, uh, I think there's a few more tweaks that need to be modified. So, if, if it does, if somebody does get stuck in a position where we're unable to fill a, 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 a top position for whatever reason, for any length of time, that maybe we consider not taking them backwards. Because, I mean, I know how I'd feel if I was in a position for six months and then, um, took a ten percent pay cut, and you start getting pretty comfortable with that and making life, life decisions, so...
But they knew that going in, too.
They do, and I mean, our hopes is that when we put someone in interim role, that they would step into that role with some, you know, additional guidance and mentorship from people in leadership posi- positions.
Mr. Chairman, not to prolong the conversation, but we're talking about two different things. We're talking about interims roles, and we're talking about out-of-class. Uh, so, uh, this, this policy is an out-of-class policy, it's not intended to be a long-term, uh, position. This is a fill-in vacation, sick leave, those type of things, when someone has a, uh, when we have a department that is needing supervision, and the, and that person's gonna be out for a while, we have someone that can step in and, and assume those duties and get a little compensation for it.
I understand, Mr. Adams.
Yeah, I, I agree with the principles of it. I, I, I like the idea of it maybe being not to exceed ninety days, so it doesn't become a perpetual thing. Um, I don't know what the standard is, um, in the private sector. I mean, it, it just happens, you do what you do, and then you hope you get recognized for it sometime in the future, and get a promotion, or get some kudo or something, and you don't get anything. I'd like to see it be ninety days and maybe a hundred eighty days, you could extend to a hundred eighty days. At that point, you're at six months, you really should have hired someone into the position. I mean, even in the private sector, if someone's out on disability at ninety to a hundred eighty days, you start to replace them. And this is just talking, what yours is describing is nothing like that, so...
No, well...
Is that, I mean, I, I don't know, that's just what I was thinking, sitting here.
You know, and, and honestly, I, I'm fine if you strike the days completely, because this is not one of those, uh, an out-of-class policy is, is not intended to be a long-term solution to a problem. This is, this is those situations, well, for example, Mike Troxel's out the entire week now between now and Christmas. If someone's stepping up, taking on his duties and responsibilities, this is an opportunity for that person to be compensated for doing that for this particular week. This has nothing, I, I'm not looking at this as a long-term solution.
I actually don't agree with that use of it, um, so I actually...
I'm sorry?
I actually am more agreeable to the use I described than the use you're describing. I mean, part of building yourself up as an employee is stepping into those situations for a week and showing you can do it. I don't think you need ten percent for that, that's an opportunity, so it's a career opportunity, in my vision. I mean, that's what I seek out every day in my, my job, is ways to help my boss and my employer. And in this case, we are the employer, and to be seen doing that, to better myself and my future. So, um, I like the idea more if it was a ninety-day thing, because we knew some end date thing, but to, to do it for a week, to, and to give someone extra ten percent, because they're stepping up for a week. It's a stretch for me, especially under vacation, guys. I mean, I, something like an emergency, or, uh, you know, a hurricane happens and someone's out because their house got destroyed, that's, that's different and less temporary.
May I suggest a hundred and twenty days? Because it would go along with like a family medical leave, twelve weeks out.
I like it. Commissioner Turner, you have the floor?
Thank you, welcome. I don't agree with that statement. He said that in private business, it doesn't happen, that's BS. In my own company, if you step up that week and you run a crew, and you, instead of just being one of the crew people, you get more money. And if you don't run that crew on the following Monday, you go back to your original pay. If you run the crew for one day during that week, you get additional dollars for taking on that responsibility for doing the extra work. So, it does happen in private business. I'm the one, it happens in my private business, so it does happen. So, maybe not at all, but it does, at all businesses, but it happens at mine. And so, uh, I, I think that the county needs to take on that same policy. I think that if somebody steps up, they need to be paid a little extra. And they're only gonna be paid, what, ten percent of the additional salary that, from them to the others, or is it ten percent of the total salary?
It's ten percent just on top of what it is that they're currently making.
Okay, ten percent of what they make?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But only while they're in that role, correct?
That is correct, and it's...
Two or three days.
That is correct, and it's monitored by payroll.
Is that up to ten percent, or a sure enough ten percent?
You know, I, I don't like the up to, and I had this conversation earlier, and then I like to tweak this before we brought it back to the board, I think it just should be a flat rate. It should be a flat ten percent.
So, that's at every level, so if somebody, let's say that, um, and I'm pulling this straight out of there. Let's say somebody up at the front desk at planning decides to go be something in the back that pays a little more money. And be, even though they're, um, it's only gonna last a day or two, they're gonna get ten percent more money to go help somebody in the back?
It's not intended to be set up in a way that they get it for just going to help. This is when we have someone that's gonna be out. Um, I don't, we have a particular issue right now that we've been dealing with for a while, that's in animal control. And, uh, this person stepped up for, uh, for days and weeks now. And, uh, so, we're just looking, I'm looking at a way that we can take, have, have the ability to, to reward that staff member for stepping up and taking on those additional duties and running a, a, that department. So, that's what, that's what this was intended to do, it wasn't intended to do anything other than that.
You think at some point that employee's gonna back, back down from where they are right now?
Absolutely, and that, when that employee does that, they go back to where they were, and they understand that. This is, you're compensated that, that additional pay for those hours that you worked doing that particular role. And it's, uh, and it keeps us moving forward, it keeps staff with someone that they can go to to have direction. And if they got issues or concerns, they got someone there, that person reports to, to their director, whomever. It just gives them, it, it, it just continues the process of being able to have someone in that leadership role, that, that takes on those duties and responsibility and be compensated for that time in that role.
And it says when an employee is appointed, so it has, there has to be a trigger there. Commissioner Ross, you have the floor?
I think part of the pitfall to this is very subjective. So, you know, as we're, I'm listening to both sides of this, I'm thinking, you know, what if, um, somebody takes off for a week of vacation, like Mr. Troxel did? Then someone else is, uh, put in there. One thing you have to consider is this is gonna happen on an annual basis, and we have a budget that we have to live with. And I just wonder, has, has anybody looked at the economic impact of what this could potentially be? Because our, you know, I, I guess, I'm, and I'm not trying to demean anybody, but is, is a permit clerk an important position? So, if somebody that's lower than a permit clerk sits in that desk for a week while that permit clerk takes a week of vacation, or goes to school, or bereavement, for whatever reason they're out, or any position in the county? Is that, you know, if, if we're talking about that, there's gonna be an economic impact. I think we really should be able to take a look at that as well, and see what that's gonna be across the board. Um, I, I do agree with Commissioner Adams, that in a way, you know, I, um, when I was in the military, um, I had to step up many a times. Uh, you know, I, I was leading petty officer, um, for, for a week when my LPO took a week off. I didn't, I didn't get any additional compensation, I promise you that. In my business, I step up and step down on a daily basis, so I'll get paid more or less, actually, I just get paid less. But, you know, in, in all fairness, I think, I think this needs to be more than just a casual conversation or workshop. I think we really need to noodle this out and look at the, the... I think we really need to noodle this out and look at the, the impacts, and, and also the, the emotional impact that it has on, on the employment community when folks, some people are moved up and some people aren't. You know, they, they take a look at this, and say, am I not worthy? Why, why didn't I get considered for that? Why did I get that extra ten percent for that week? I could've used the money. So I think we just need to have a little bit longer conversation than today.
I agree with that.
Mr. Adams, that, wrap this up.
My, my opinion is I think this could be better done through an org chart type thing, right? Where you establish someone as a team lead, so when person A is out, person B is the person. And that allows that person to, to develop their career and have that opportunity to have a, another. And I don't, it wouldn't even necessarily be a position, right? Right now, I'm the team lead for the Midwest, which is from Alabama to Ohio, right? I get no extra compensation for that, but I run twelve guys, because it lets my boss not have to interact with every little detail at the low level and allows him to do some stuff that's strategic. I think something like that in our infrastructure, and granted, I'm still new, so I'm getting the org chart. I haven't gotten the full org chart. But I think if we do things like that, it gives people more paths and more steps in their career potentially and kind of solves this problem that we're trying to do with a few sentences.
All right, I think the trigger here is appointed, and that's up to staff to do that, so, and I like the one hundred and twenty day suggestion that you had. So for now, commissioners, are we willing to move this forward to give them some direction to clean this up and bring it back at another date? We can have this discussion as we go forward?
Sure. And if I might just ask, is this something that you would wanna see for if someone goes on vacation? Because in my experience, everyone's job description says it's all of their duties as assigned, correct? So if someone goes away on vacation, someone might step in for a short amount of time, but technically, depending on the level of the person, they're not really disconnected anyways. They're still giving direction and, and, and working still doing their jobs. They're just on vacation. So I would think this would be more for so things out of the realm where it's an open position, or it's somebody on family medical leave. I wouldn't say that we would use this policy for vacation. So if that's something you guys would like to see, I can certainly put something together for that, or if we want to take that all together, I can do that as well.
Well, Angela, you stepped up and answered a question, and all four lights are on now, so I'm. Here we go again. Commissioner Rawls?
The, the question that comes to mind is, you know, if, if this is gonna be restricted to only that, then we need to define that in a policy so we can see that. Because I think just as a layperson or as an employee of the county reading this, this is, should be open to all and would subject us to discrimination suits of different types if, if, if we were to just run with this the way it's presented. Somebody's, somebody's gonna say, look, I, I need you to work for me tomorrow, or run this, and they're not gonna get compensated. And they go, wait a minute, so-and-so over in another department did, or I heard about this. So I think we just need to get, get this thing nailed down hard.
All right, let's see, next, Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, unless I'm missing something, I think you got two issues here. The, the, the long-term or, or like sick leave or something like that. If somebody's gonna be out for an extended period of time, is that that person would step up and fill those roles and responsibilities and get the ten percent? To me, it's a little different if somebody's doing it just on vacation. So maybe you look at it of that particular situation and then also of the one that would be long-term.
All right, Commissioner Adams, that?
To answer your question, it's exactly something I would support if it was defined by which roles it's available to. The amount of time of one hundred and twenty days, I think, is good. And then what the extension would be beyond that. And no, I don't think it should be used for vacation coverage.
Okay.
Commissioner Turner?
What he just said. Plus, I think what he said earlier needs not just be blown off as a comment. I think that that's exactly how it needs to be handled. Is if, is certain people need to be designated for certain positions. And I don't think that, I don't think that if you're mower, riding a mower, and you decide to run a backhoe for two days, that you should, without getting promoted to the backhoe thing, that it should be at that level. I don't mean any disrespect. I'm just saying that I don't know that it should be at that level. But I understand that if, if there's a department head, but there's not an assistant department head, and that department head takes off, then, then yes, I think they should have some compensation for stepping up into that role.
I think you know you need to bring this back to us on this one, so why don't you massage it and identify it and take our suggestions and bring that one back?
Well, this was really helpful to help me design it going further, so I appreciate it.
No other lights are up, so you're off. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If we go six more minutes.
We're fixing to be done. Commissioner requests, I'll start with Commissioner Rawls?
I just want to wish everybody here a Merry Christmas, and I personally am looking forward to at least a new set of numbers in a year. Hopefully, a different economy than we're facing right now. You know, I think we've got a lot of struggles ahead of us that some of us are probably more aware of than others. But Commissioner Harvey and I were talking this morning about, he said, how, how is your house coming along? You can't get, you can't get products and materials.
I think it's important that the, the public realize that we're, we are gonna be facing some challenges next year, whether we realize it now or not, especially regarding purchasing of materials. And our lumber index has hit another high. You know, August, it went up to over eight hundred, it was eight hundred and sixty per thousand board feet, and it's back up there again. Plywood has gone back up. A little bit it came down is now shot back up. So we're gonna be facing some interesting times ahead of us. And personally, I would like to see us get to work on the budget soon and later, because we need, we're gonna need to address some of these issues. But again, this is the Christmas season. It's a joyous season. It's a chance for Christians to celebrate the birth of our Savior and our faith. And I just want to thank everybody for their participation today, you know, with the, the morning session. That was, that was very informative, very interesting. Hopefully, there'll be some conversations that come out of that that'll move us in the right direction.
Commissioner Pickens?
Just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, enjoyed working with each one of you, and look forward to twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Commissioner Adams, that?
I'm Merry Christmas to everybody, especially staff. Appreciate everything everyone does. Appreciate everything everyone's done for me since I took this seat. There hasn't been a single person that hasn't, I haven't gotten everything I've asked for, but hasn't tried to give me everything I asked for in a timely manner. So I appreciate that very much. The few things I'm waiting for are recent requests, so it's not a big deal. I look forward to working with you guys more next year and the next three years, I guess, or maybe some of us three years, I don't know. Depends on the politics situation. You know, I love each and every one of you guys. I love everyone in this community, regardless of which side of that earlier statement it was. I am gonna do everything I can to bring unity between those two groups. It probably is an effort in futility, from what I heard even in the hall walking out of here. But I'm going to approach both of those groups as a private citizen to try to bring some sort of unity, because there are things in our society that need to be addressed. There are currently people that are enslaved in the United States. There are currently people that are given injustices based on their race and their minorities and discrimination. I don't know that applies to a, a physical being or not. In my opinion, it doesn't. But hopefully, we can make some headway there as well in the new year.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When you're trying to get the, the record for the longest meeting, I think you just got it done. No lunch hour, no, no naps, no hardly any recesses. No nothing. Okay. Again, I want to hire, give everybody a Merry Christmas like I did this morning and all that stuff, but I'm ready for this meeting to be over, so I'm gonna quit.
Merry Christmas all. County attorney?
Start on my twenty-one point plan for the new year. I just want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. County administrator?
Yes, sir. The only thing I'd like to do is curse Willis Carrier right now, because he was the inventor of AC in nineteen oh two. And it is, it is Merry Christmas in here for sure, and thank you for our, our candy canes, and I wish.
Another one, I got one of those.
I got a whole thing. And I wish everybody a, a very safe and joyous holiday. Merry Christmas.
Before I adjourn, adjourn the meeting, is there any other public miscellaneous public comment seen during this meeting's adjournment? Dang.